Good evening and welcome to the Wellington Board of Education's special meeting. It is Wednesday, May twenty second, two thousand twenty four. We are calling the meeting order at six oh one P M. We will begin tonight by offering an opportunity for a president to speak. If there is anybody in the public who would like to share some thoughts, please raise your hand physically or virtually. Kind of first you or us and then. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to number three, which is new business. But A, of course, is the budget reduction from the Board of Finance. They had that meeting last week.
Yes.
And we need to make some adjustments, so.
So I can, I can kind of start you off here. The, the budget, I put a kind of a cheat sheet in front of you, so you can see kind of where I was, was going. The budget that failed there, that is the nine twenty eight million. The budget that they approved is the nine million, seven sixty nine, two seventeen, um, which is a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred fifty five dollar cut. Uh, they also did two other things. They uh, cut the selectmen's budget by a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And they also applied two hundred thousand dollars on additional savings that they had through, I think, uh, interest towards the budget offset. The selectmen's meeting on Monday night, uh, which he was pretty vocal, I think, of what they were gonna do. Uh, they did cut the one twenty five straight from your budget of on C I P. So the one point five that was, was requested, one point five million, they cut it by a hundred and twenty five thousand. I had a conversation with him today and said, there was a lot of discussion with the selectman that was just about roofs. Uh, and I said, that wasn't accurate. Um, it was about roofs and H vac. Uh, and uh, Stephanie Summers got on and said something. Um, but it was after the vote and it was too late. So I don't think that was gonna change their mind anyways. A hundred and twenty five thousand dollars was a lot of money for him to cut out of his budget. Uh, I just wish it was clear for public or the public to know that it was uh, not just impact, the two point five is not there for roofs alone. Um, so I clarified that with him and I just clarified that with our people. So that uh, brought the one point five million down to one million, three hundred seventy five thousand dollars. It's still a good number. I still think it's gonna have to be a bond. Um, it doesn't stop us from applying for an H VAC grant, but um, you saw that report now how much that costs. The second thing that kind of happened was uh, they were in there a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred fifty five dollar cut to us, to the board. Um, they were not factoring in the fifty eight that you offered up. They just said that can be part of it, so. Uh, my feeling in the meeting was I kind of jumped in and said, look, if you are going to uh, cut the board fifty thousand dollars, um, beyond the fifty eight that was already offered up. To me, that was a no brainer. And I typically don't jump in on those things and I say it's a no brainer because the other part of the conversation was one individual saying it three hundred thousand dollars plus. Um, that would have been catastrophic. Uh, that was a lot of money. And so to be able to get out of there that night with a fifty thousand dollar in addition to the fifty eight, I thought was a good risk to take to get back to voters. Knowing there's probably gonna be another, you know, a hundred and twenty five, which did happen the other night. We're gonna get to the communication piece tonight, but I thought Arthur said something really um, clear, and I think it's important to be on the video again uh, for Board of Ed. And I think it's important that in any communications that go out, this is clear that in essence, this was a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred fifty five dollars plus a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars cut from Board of Education. There's no other way to look at it. Um, it was very clear. Uh, but it's gonna show up that in the general, the general government budget that it was a hundred point five thousand dollar cut. It's just not here. Uh, they just took it out of, out of C I P. And it was just this, they didn't consider parking lots that were in C I P, didn't, really didn't consider other things. So um, I get it, it's a, a lot of money that they had to figure out how to cut. But from your operating budget perspective, to get out from my opinion, uh, an additional fifty thousand dollars was something that um, was a way better risk than three hundred thousand dollars plus. So what I did was I took that fifty eight off of the one oh eight, so the balance to reduce is fifty thousand dollars. You have another teacher resignation. Someone's moving closer, which I'll announce next meeting, but she's moving closer to home. And so there's, we always budget when someone leaves or a certain point on the step scan. So it's kind of middle of the road. We budget for step five, um, with a masters. And that, the person that's leaving was making more. So there's an eight thousand, six hundred and two dollars savings. Take that off, it brings you down forty one thousand, three hundred ninety eight. By the way, this literally happened within days, okay? This is new information. The second thing that's on there, and this person's not even signed a contract yet, but I have verbal from them. Uh, we had a, a one point O P E opening because of the way the, the P E happened. Our internal person, Doug Fink, said he was interested in it. He's half time now, he's gonna go full time, so I know what his salary is. What we budgeted again was the same thing, and we see savings there, another eight thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars. Okay, so when he signs, which I'm confident that's gonna happen, I wouldn't put it on here if I wasn't. Um, your balance now to reduce is thirty three thousand, two hundred and fourteen. You know, this stuff happens as people leave. I hire the candidates, typically the best candidate that is sent to me. Um, they might be taking family benefits and they might be top step. They might be a brand new teacher and not taking insurance at all. That stuff happens. So based upon that, I've tried to create some options for you, so you can see, and these are just three options you can come up with your own, right? Um, the way I look at this now is you have to cut thirty three thousand dollars. You're welcome to not use the things I gave you already, um, but I think you should. Option one is to simply take thirty three thousand dollars of what you have in the non-lapsing account today. We tell Donna, we're gonna apply that, it would be applied to outplacement tuition, and you're done. It would bring your non-lapsing account down to about nine, and I have an exact number there, but it's also, it's, it's about ninety one thousand dollars, okay? Still a good chunk of money. Is there risk in it? Yes, probably a smaller amount of risk. And there's new legislation that came out, and this is all tied together. The new legislation for the non-lapsing account, they just passed. Did the budget, uh, uh, did the governor sign the budget? I still have not heard that. I don't know if he did, but this is in there. As long as the governor signs the budget, they created legislation for Boards of Education and Regional School Districts. For a non-lapsing account, they did not change their percentage, it's still two percent. It no longer has to be requested or a finance, you guys decided. That means at the end of this year, by chance, there's any money left, you could just decide to vote and put it in your non-lapsing account. Again, the same parameters are there about what your cap could be, you're not gonna get near your cap. So even though if you apply the thirty three thousand, you would bring a balance to ninety, if there's something left, if there's twenty thousand at the end of the line, end of the year, you could put that money right back in your non-lapsing account. I think the point is, it was voted on as money for education and they want to keep this education. Right, the regional schools, you should look into this because they have a similar thing now, where you can create it, it doesn't have to be created now by Boards of Finance, Boards of Ed have that power, okay?
And you don't have to get there, you don't have to spend it.
Has to be used for educational purposes, and you don't need to ask for the money to be put in, and you do not have to ask to uh, spend the money. I have to ask you to spend it.
Two, two percent, you said?
Max is two percent, yes.
Over the current budget.
Over the current budget, so you're like, it's like two sixty, two seventy, I think is where the number falls uh, currently. Uh, and they backdated that, the new change in the law, so it applies to twenty three, twenty four. So, which is another rare thing, but they want to do it timing wise or worse than budget now, because they know that's what we'll be wrapping up.
And what's our ceiling?
It's around that two sixty, two seventy, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, again, you wouldn't hit that, I'm not anticipating you're gonna have that much money at the end of the year. But if you have some, you could just roll it in, okay? Option two, you could um, eliminate the thirty five thousand from the special ed position. The reason I do, it's more than what you have to find, the thirty three thousand. So I just said, we'll add seventeen hundred eighty six to maintenance. You could add that seventeen eighty six to any account you want. We took money out of maintenance, that's why I put it back there. Okay, that's if you want to eliminate a position. The third option is you could just flat out, a little bit roll the dice, this is probably a little bit riskier, but it's um, there's, it's calculated risk. You could just remove thirty three thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars, the balance, from special ed outplacement tuition. You're basically underfunding it, knowing that you're going to have to fund it at some point. It could be that you just put non-lapsing funds in later. It could be that somebody leaves, the, the next person I hire comes in and they wait, don't, they don't take insurance, and now you have a twenty thousand dollar savings. You move that twenty thousand dollars into special ed, and you close that gap. If I hire someone and they're more expensive and they take insurance, this risk goes out the window. You'd have to take it from something else, like non-lapsing funds, but you know you have the money there. So it kind of creates an opportunity for you to do that, okay? That's really, you would determine if you were gonna move stuff after new hires are, we're done with the hire. So sometime in September, October, you just look at and go, I would tell you, hey, you actually do have savings between insurance and staffing of fourteen thousand dollars. You make that transfer, the balance of the twenty seven, you know, about twenty thousand, you would take from non-lapsing. So there's a little more risk in that. But I tell you that happens on an annual basis. When I hire people, when someone leaves, they're making top step and they're um, uh, taking family insurance. We bring them down to step five, that's where we budget for, for every position with a masters. But we keep the full insurance in because there's not as much wiggle in that, and most people take insurance. So there may be some savings there. So those are, I, I want to put something in front of you with some options. That's up to you where you go from there. This is what you can control from uh, your budget standpoint.
Is that point four special ed, is that that Wilson thing?
That point four is the, the reading person, correct, is the thirty five thousand for the reading person, the two days a week. There is a possibility with that position, if you decide to go that route, I, it's not that much money. But that you, we could bring that person in or using some professional development money, it would probably be like a quarter of that amount of money, no? It would be thirty five thousand. So whatever hours you could buy on an annual, you just create a contract with that person for reading. They would probably not be servicing kids because they wouldn't be our. But you could get the professional development portion of it, it's a little, not as clean.
We have to have a motion to start talking about options, I just have a question then, um, for option one. If we did, um, what we primarily use the um, non-lapsing funds for is to fund outplacements that are unexpected? Is that fair to say, or is that?
Even if it's um, expected, we still apply funds to it. So in your budget, the sixty two thousand that you approved are ready to put, for non-lapsing towards it, is going into that line, and it's typically because it's so expensive.
Right, so the, the reason for my question is if we applied thirty three thousand dollars from non-lapsing to the outplacement and we find during this upcoming school year that we need thirty three thousand dollars and two hundred, whatever it is, thirty three thousand dollars, we would go to the Board of Finance and ask for that money?
If your non-lapsing account was drained, they're not gonna get, my feeling, my feeling is they're not gonna give you money if you have money in your non-lapsing account. Um, if you put, applied the thirty three thousand, and then you had another outplacement come in and you drain that account and you still needed more money, you could determine if you wanted to go back and ask for more money. My feeling is they can always say no. They could say yes, but they could always say no. The other piece, Jen, that's really important, and I'm glad you asked that question, is that I talked to Donna about this today. If you went with that option, you're in essence reducing the budget by thirty three, you're reducing the budget by fifty thousand dollars. And you're saying thirty three would be um, non-lapsing. We wouldn't necessarily have to apply that right away, it wouldn't happen on August twenty eighth. We could decide, you could decide later on. Again, we don't know what happens, someone who's outplays moves. That comes off the, and now you don't need to apply any non-lapsing. It's just a plan, correct, it's, you're basically establishing your plan.
Isn't that option three?
That's what, what's the difference between after one and after?
What you're stating there is option three.
So what's the difference?
Between one and three?
Yeah. I know, I, I know the timing difference, but the one, the way you just described it.
Because you're.
Timing difference, what's the difference?
Cause you're not applying non-lapsing funds in option three.
But.
But you can at any point.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
I personally.
What you're, uh, what you're stating is your hope, uh, for my opinion. In option three, you're saying, I hope we find some savings from staff and insurance. And if we do, that is where we're gonna transfer in and we're gonna leave our non-lapsing account alone. That's how I read it. And it also says, and if we don't, and we don't have, find any dollars elsewhere, it's going to be non-lapsing. It kind of becomes like second step, non-lapsing is your, is like your second choice. Whereas the first option is, you're saying, we're gonna put non-lapsing in. Again, that's how you apply it, you don't necessarily have to spend that non-lapsing until the bills are in and we know there's no money elsewhere.
Isn't it all kind of the same thing anyways? Because if we do get savings from insurance or teachers or any various line item, it could be any line item within our budget. We now have the option to move that to non-lapsing anyways. At the end of the year.
As long as it's educational purposes, yes, we could.
Our whole budget is educational purposes, isn't it?
Yes, I, I have to go back and look, because what they put in this law, um, and the way they crafted it, I wanna make sure it's, I didn't compare your policy today. Um, I wanna make sure what's in your policy, because your policy might say, which you could always change. Um, yeah, I think your policy says um, unplanned special education um, or capital improvement projects. But to me, the sixth could be considered unplanned. Uh, you're, it, it is kind of like the same exact application. What we, the reason why we, you do need to make some sort of decision is we have to reduce some line. I have to tell Donna, you've got to reduce some line. Or you've got to apply funds somehow, some way. And that's why I said, it's the, you could just reduce the special ed outplacement line and call it a day and when it comes time to pay the bills, you go there.
Be a reduction.
Yeah.
Whereas like that's the difference between three and one, is one, you might be able to write it out and see what happens. But three would be, even though on paper it would look like an immediate cut. Right, but what number three would be an immediate?
You could probably write both of them if you wanted to. It's just how we're stating. You know how we, when we had our non-lapsing, we had a chimney and shit. And you said, oh, this amount of money is going to the chimney. The rest of the money now, you, now we have X number of dollars and you're not not seeing a bunch, that's really the difference. So if you remove this thirty three from non-lapsing, I'm not gonna bring something to you that I'm pretending like that money's gone, and I have to pretend that money, and so do you.
And if we don't touch non-lapsing, if we get two more outplacements, we can kind of afford it through non-lapsing.
Depending on cost, yeah, yeah, I mean, yep.
So this number, the ninety one plus the thirty three is after the chimney, so the chimney is already.
Chimney's already fully removed from, from your non-lapsing.
Okay.
This, your balance is like one point five right now, it's, it's about that number. So if you take the thirty three, it brings you down to the ninety one.
Do you know what else I would like to do? I would like to put that seventy, one thousand, seven hundred eighty six back into maintenance. So even if we out that, um, you know, the thirty three by that amount, just to be sure they have what they need to be where it work.
Dude, we cut it because, oops, sorry, go ahead.
We, we cut that, right?
We took ten dollars, dollars from each school.
Because they weren't using it, or be, for savings?
We put extra in for projects so that every time we didn't have to go to a, the town meeting for you to fix things, which I think that was something that you had said, I thought it was brilliant. You know, Steve texted me today, actually yesterday. Uh, my hot water's not working today, Matt Jensen said, my hot water's not working, both of them, one day apart. I have to say, yeah, there's much, there's, you have to do it, you have to have hot water. So they're fixing those things, that's what I would use that ten thousand dollars for. Um, without having to go to town meetings. Do I think that, again, it's like, yeah, I can order spend the wine and, you know, the coverage. So moving the seventeen hundred dollars isn't a, a lot of money in the grand scheme of things.
Okay.
So can I ask a clarifying question? I, I think Sam's question was, what can you put into non-lapsing, which is the remainder of your budget up to two percent of your existing budget?
Yeah.
Correct.
But you can only, you're saying you can only pull out according to policy you believe for unforeseen special education or capital improvement.
Correct.
So my question is, I threw a fit when you had professional development days and we're, we're gonna charge parents transportation, and I had it more taken out on a last day, what did that call? To cover the transportation?
It's just part of the non-lapsing, what do you mean?
So like, i- if it's only those two categories, but if it's only those two categories, what is?
It's educational, no, it was educational, and I also, I may have paid for your, that transportation out of the after-school program, right?
No, this was, this was last year, the, the first year it started.
Uh, yeah, I have to go back, and I'm, I'm sure it does, I'm sure it's okay.
No, I know, I just want, I want that to be clear, is that we're not, well, we can use that non-lapsing.
Right, right. But that's a policy we wrote, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, you would change your feelings, change it.
So when you keep it broad, so it can be spent for whatever we need.
And the only time, I don't know if this is clear, the only time you can, like, you'll have to make a motion quickly at the end of the school year, is your July meeting to say, Donna will give you whatever the number's left over. And it might not be July, it's when they wrap up the budget and you know what's, if there's money left, that would be the meeting you can just say, we're, we're requesting this back to our budget. Or to our non-lapsing account.
It's not a request anymore, we're just making.
Correct, you're just doing, and, and really my request, I'm saying that request back is back to Donna.
Okay, I understand.
And that would be, that would be enough.
Does anybody even like option two?
I don't.
No.
We just props it out.
I, I would never vote for, for any teachers.
Alright, good.
Um, and when we've had many people talking about um, test scores and improving things, and we have a new curriculum, and we have new uh, literacy curriculum coming in, having another person on the end can only benefit our district and our students and help those test scores. And someone, we have someone who's available, so to, to give up that position when we have someone who's qualified that we know or maybe layer, no way.
You're gonna get way more out of that point four too than you would any bringing in outside professionals, just to go train, do Wilson training, fortune, it's a fortune.
She has experience.
She is a Wilson trainer.
Yes. We don't want to get that.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
So she could even go beyond the half time and go into the professional development and train some of the teachers that need.
Correct.
That's great.
So my personal opinion is I think we need to keep the money in our non-lapsing fund. And I don't like using the word gamble on it, but see if any savings happen. And then if it doesn't come through, we still have the money in the non-lapsing and then pay for it, like with option three.
Then you would have months, you have months to figure that out. It's not like September rolls and I'm gonna come back to you and say, ah, your budget is spent throughout the year, so.
Do you know what vacancies are expecting?
So right now I have two, two elementary.
Awesome.
Yeah. That's what I know today.
I think also what's important to remember is that the approximate fund balance of ninety one thousand is now. That should, I was looking at, so after a long sleepless night after the Board of Finance meeting, option three was what ran, pretty much was what ran through my mind, and I went through the numbers that you had um, in the existing budget. And what you said about there being some money, anticipated money from the state, but also anticipated bills. And it seemed like there would, if everything held the way it should hold, there'd be a fairly sizable chunk to move back in, which would put that balance past what we had it at before, honestly. And I was like, well, that's the way to do it without cutting it. Or without removing anything or changing anything, or it's just one of those things where we'll just eat it and use our funds for it. So I'm in favor of three because I don't think it's as much of a gamble as some, I think it, I think it's gonna be a fairly, fairly easy, pretty cool of it, certainly.
It also gives us the effort for me to put the money back with this year's budget. So that next year, if whatever we have left over this year, well, whatever, um, we could put back in, and that's money from this year, and then we have next year's budget involved. We haven't, we would kind of gone into it on option one, correct? Um, no, maybe not.
Jen turned his camera on, right?
You can, you can close it if you want. Stop video. There you go.
I was asking about the open positions because there's a teacher, there's teacher shortages in certain areas. Um, as we know, we don't have a language teacher at this time. But elementary is pretty sought after by youngsters right now. Um, so that makes me think we might be able to get somebody.
I think we'll be able to, yeah.
That would be great.
And I mean, the two, the openings we had for special ed were, I filled one, I've got another one coming, and that was already recommended to me, so that's good. You know, it's not, I don't expect that we're gonna have unfilled positions in those shortage areas, so.
Okay, well, I will make a motion. We can continue to discuss, but I will, I will make a motion that Board of Education, oh, how many are we this? Board of Education, reduce Program Three for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget by the amount of thirty three thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. I'm gonna leave it there because we don't have to specify our.
Second.
Do we? Don't we need to make a new values, like all the, like, change the total budget value?
They set it for you.
They do, so we don't need.
As long as you agree with all the other things that I'm gonna do, it's really what you're changing. You're accepting my changes in there, the, the eighty six oh two, which, and the eighty one eighty four.
Do I need to amend it to a group pushing? Um, I'll amend my motion to also include the additional reductions as outlined uh, by show to I'm gonna say, uh, teacher program, or is it Denver Bridge School, it's one and two?
It is one, both of those are, now it is, it's both one and two, yeah.
Alright, you wanna spell it out?
Just say for teacher vacancies.
Okay, alright, then I, okay, so I'll amend my motion to include the reductions in the amount of, math all can, sixteen thousand, seven hundred eighty six dollars uh, for a teacher reduction. Was it software?
Teacher's salary?
Teacher's salary, yes, thank you.
I'm just gonna stand by a second.
Sorry.
Okay. Did anybody have anything else to say? I'm imagining um, someone saying that we've been talking about our deficit because of so many outplacements, and now we're gonna take funding from outplacement tuition in our minds. How do we explain that in a way that makes sense to people?
We're discussing, is your, your video, which.
Okay.
That's what I think, cause I, I was gonna start talking about that, like, wait, we have a second thing on here, that's probably where she.
Okay, we'll put it there.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and vote on this motion. I'm not going to repeat it. Does everyone understand we're voting on? Great. All in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Thank you.
Alright, I have another to square a comment today. I mean, I listened to the, um. Board of Selectmen meeting and the Board of Finance meeting and it seemed pretty clear that. You know, if heaven forbid, we do. Need to go that it's expected that we would go and ask for money backwards. I mean, I know that they could be. You know what I mean? But I heard that mentioned a couple of different times that. That's. I mean, it's like the normal, not the normal thing to do, but what, you know what I'm trying to say, like. Yeah, that is an option. Yeah, that's how I'd like to work that. Yeah, but I mean, I guess we'll see what happens. Hopefully, we don't have to worry about it, but it was brought up. At both those meetings by numerous people, so heaven forbid when. The crow comes to roost or whatever the saying is, but you know.
Another area we might need help is repairs. Because we, we have. The one point three seven five, which. You know, we're looking at roofs and age back, but we still have every year there's. Quite two cup water heaters this week, you know? So every year there's gonna be a lot of repairs that need to be done to that.
You're either gonna have support for bond or you're not. And if you don't have support for bond. You're gonna replace your roofs and chip away.
There's always odds and ends miscellaneous things that are just. Pain in the butt things that sometimes I would imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, that you might have to wait to tally them up in order to go to CIP with. That numerical value. So you're, you're postponing these little small odds and ends projects and yes, maintaining things can be expensive, but. What's CIP, ten K and more? Like that could be. What was it last time? Three different plumbing jobs? You know what I mean? So it's like, that's kind of a pain too. That's why I was really being an advocate for let's up that maintenance. And I understand that. It got taken away because we do technically, but just thinking of it as. A service person knowing that's like, well, that could be this, that could be a toilet, that could be, you know, I mean, that could be all these little things that it would be nice to, to plug away at these things. While they're fresh and more affordable to do with that money instead of like, well. This happened and this happened, but we have to wait because we don't have enough in our budget, but we don't have enough to go to CIP. In that gray area, you know what I mean? So.
And with children, you can't wait. You know.
Certain things.
Your nose.
Yeah, plumbing.
Okay, moving on to item three B, which is a community. At the. Board of Finance meeting. The, uh. First selectman and the chair of the board of finance and myself agreed to collaborate on a letter for the council. And that is in progress. Um, and then. Phil is gonna help turn it into a postcard mailer for all of the residents in town. There is a timetable. Involved having to do it when our referendum is set and blackout periods and things like that. But I think originally we don't have. A date for that, so we're doing okay. Right?
I don't know. No dates said yet.
Right, okay.
They set a date to.
Go to town meeting.
Go to town meeting.
Or they, no. They set a date to have a meeting to call, call.
That's correct. So.
Um, Wellington Day came up, that's this Saturday from eleven to three. Um, I know there are some other tables there, um. That folks of different backgrounds and political parties will be at. Um, I think it's a great opportunity, a good place for us to be, be lots of children and families. Um, just so we can reach some of those folks, but based on what we're saying and hopefully answer some questions and get folks involved. I can be there the whole time, um, and help us set up. I did talk to Melissa McKinnon already. She's been very gracious about it. She said she'll get us in even if we decide last minute. Um, the only thing is if you tell her after tomorrow, we won't be mentioned in the program.
I don't suppose, I don't know if anybody would be looking at the program and realize we're there, get super excited and run off. Maybe first thing. Next to the pizza eating contest, me.
So do anybody have any questions or comments about the publications? Or, um, have any time to volunteer on Saturday to come with me out on the. Out on the, uh, the park there. I will be happy to help you.
I am working on. We know like, what's it gonna say or?
Um, it is supposed to be factual. And agreed upon by all three parties, so right now I'm drafting it and I haven't heard anything from the other two parties.
Actually, there's four parties because they added Christina to that.
Officially they added her because I, it was floated. I don't know if they actually.
I mean, there was no vote on the agreement. It was just a.
Yeah.
CIP, I think she was.
Right. So I haven't, I'm to be totally honest, I haven't heard anything about it from either of the other two people. And my own have been working on putting something together, hoping that if I. Lay a little bit of groundwork and start some kind of draft because as a jumping off point. Um. There was something about Mr. Tanaka needed to ask the lawyer about. Something. I can't remember quite what it was, so for who's funding you or do you already know? Cause I think I remember hearing something about because there was different.
Can't be invited.
No, they, well, they removed the chairs of the. Collaboration, so it's only the, the, uh, chairs of the boards and the first selectmen and chairs of CIP that are. Collaborating on, so it's basically pretty political.
And it seemed like somebody had the money to pay for it.
Board of Finance, um, Jason floated that the board of finance had money to toward it, whether or not, I don't know. Where that ended up. That's the last I remember about funding.
Oh, yeah, I think he said they had like a thousand dollar a night for supplies or something that they aren't in every.
And I already have, I sent all three, four people the cost.
That's where it stands as of now. I do think there was something that needed to be read past a lawyer before we could put out, um. That kind of publication. I don't recall what that was, but. There's still all drafting and I do think there's some urgency behind it since we need to educate folks as soon as possible, encourage them to participate, introduce them to. The, the varying factors, um, and we need to get this referendum rolling or we're gonna be stuck with last year's budget, so. That's why I'm plugging away at it, um. And we'll send it on over to the other participants as soon as I'm comfortable with it, which I'd be in a game or two. Um, just to, just to have it and see where we can go. I can only do my part.
Board of Education and they should do.
A full letter. I left. I left a section where the, um. General. Government, um, bullets could go as far as what they wanted people to say and know.
Well, I think the, the theory behind it was that it's a united fund, so it should be one letter with signatures at the bottom.
I agree. It has occurred to me that if. There is not participation from the other folks and I can't say that's the case. But wondering if we end up being out there hanging alone, if it's something we might wanna just do on our own if. There's not any interest anymore or movement from. So that's in the back of my mind that we didn't see the change. And do you want, I mean, that's something. I'm picturing like science fair and tribe, you know, thing at the table at Wellington. Like what? What kind of display is gonna be most educational, fast and approachable and understood? Do we want something written out that is on paper that people could take away and check out later? It would be great if those postcards were ready to go now because then. We would have some in hand and you know what I mean, or show drafts of people, know people for it in their mailbox, but we don't really have. Right now.
So I was thinking about this today. Here's. I think there, okay, so. I'm just gonna say. This fight has become, and it is a fight. It's become oddly personal with me for some reason, but. I was thinking about. The timeline of it. And I think there's a lot of confusion as to what was first put in front of the board of finance and why. And then what was subsequently put in front of the board of finance and why? Because I remember. You had to get something in front of them and at that point we only had. Two additional out placements at that time. And then when our final. Budget went to them. It included. These things that we requested along with two other additional placements, which shot up. It was either one or two. That shot up another.
Your, your, all of your requests were in the first one, what was not in the first one was the additional out placements.
Okay, see, that's why I'm. Like, the, the timeline of why the budget that we put forward kind of went like this. I think is a bit confusing. I know it's kind of a big ask in a short amount of time, but do you, is that something you can draft up so you can? Right, here's when it first went, here's what it was, here's why it was, here's why it shot up.
Yeah.
Or here's why it went up higher. And here's why, you know, you've got all this list too and you say, here, well, here's why it's lower because we brought it back down with this. And here's where we are. I think having something that kind of outlines. Why things happen and when they happen would be beneficial. That especially at something like Wellington Day where you could, where you could actually point two things for people and explain.
If we had the cover page that lists all the programs and the totals at the bottom and the percentages. For each phase of the budget and then highlighted. The parts that changed. Right? So that if we also.
I don't, yeah, I don't want too much.
Or could we just have the. The pie charts that you've done before with. That shows.
I think the one page handout that you have the budget snapshot. Tells people exactly what, what the information is that's there. The only thing that. Which has been a hot topic, Arthur, which is to your point, is from workshop three to workshop four, there were some changes. I think my personal feeling is. From workshop four, you set your budget in workshop four. And from the timing of workshop four to when it was, it was then sent to the board of finance. From that timing. To when I presented to the board of finance is when you had the additional out placements. That is the piece that I think is important and for people to know. This is what the board initially submitted and then here's what happened. And there's no way you could be in a hole. Underfunded by hundreds of thousands of dollars. Which is why you, you increase from there.
What was being portrayed? My understanding of it was that it seemed like Bruce thought that we had all of a sudden decided that we wanted all these extra things, which you're saying that. Not what happened. We had two extra out placements and he may be confusing. There was a monetary amount and the price is wide, right?
Bruce's perspective is that. I presented a needs based budget and that you all added more to it. That is part of the budget process. And so you could decide to add five teachers if you want to. That's your job as elected officials. And so the budget I presented to you was something that I have to put in front of these, something that I see as reasonable. It doesn't mean you're not gonna add different priorities and add things to it or change it. It's your budget. It's not my budget. So when you created your budget at workshop four. That, from that time on, that's where things change. And I think that's where, you know, when you, when you talk about a timeline, like I can lay out. And October, November, my administrators, I think you've been through budget all year long. Um, October, November, we're, we're pulling in information. What do we need? What do we need going through? What do we not need? What's coming out? And then December hits and I'm finalizing things and it's being presented in January. And so that first presentation in January is. It's not the budget. It's just the start of it for your work. And so I think that from the timeline perspective is important. Um. And you shared your personal experience about what had happened and why, but that shouldn't matter. Your budget. When you vote on it at pro, you know, at the, or after the work, budget workshop is what you said is your budget. That's the bottom line. You had to come back because I said, oh, we got a problem. And you had to add to it. And it was because of the additional out placements. That was the change.
Can you, um, provide for us, um, an updated copy of the budget that we did use during our workshops? In a binder and people could just leaf through it. If they were interested in.
Yes. We have one almost done and just tonight is the last piece of it. As of today.
I have two comments. One is. Repeatedly. We, we've said, you've said, Phil. The budget starts at the bottom every year. So it's not. A reasonable to think that there would be additions made at this table. And it's not uncommon that that has happened because. In all my experience of being a part of the budget process before I was on board of ed, before I was PTE president, just. And Anne's been on here for a long time too. Budgets have been added to during that last meeting based on discussion. It happens over and over and if. We, we can't present that timeline, but if people are. Have been part of the process. That's the way it happens. And it happens that they do the same thing. When it, the budget gets to them, they make additions, they make dissubtractions where it fits. So it's not uncommon for us to do that either. And we shouldn't be penalized for that happening. In what they might think is the eleventh hour. Because. We hadn't made a vote yet.
If you had members of the public sitting out there saying, you need to add, you need to add, you need to add, you're elected vicious. You're gonna look at them and go. We probably ought to consider this, right? So that is again also part of the process. So. The budget is not set until that last point.
No, just, it is very, um. Maddening to hear that the first budget that were presented. Had this, this amount and then we added things on top of it. That first budget Phil presented, that was not first budget Phil presented. That was baseline for us to start with.
You started work.
I mean, he's been always very transparent with the board of finance with everybody, like here's we are, where we are, here's what we're thinking, but that was not first budget presented. The one after workshop four that we all voted on and agreed upon, that was first budget presented. It's very frustrating. Yeah.
And the title changes, the front page type, title changes. It says super tense proposed budget. And then it says Board of Education approved budget. Wow. That's where it becomes yours.
I think that's a very important distinction. Because like you said, that's part of the process. That's what.
I, I'm glad I can over the next couple of days pull together, um. You know, triple, someone, someone figures out the table piece and who's there. Um, and I can put the, um. You know, I can have a, an updated couple of budgets so people can look, look through those. I can have copies of the one pager snapshot. Um, and I can put a timeline together that can be on the tribal. So there's. Whoever's there can just point and go, this is how it happened. This is why we're where we are. This is what's been caught already. So you can show all those things.
Can we see if Melissa? Melissa, are you still there?
Just quick pass down mute.
There you are. Thank you.
Yes.
What do we need to know? Display, what do you recommend?
Whatever. I mean, you are welcome to add something to the program and the Wellington Day booklet. It will be printed tomorrow or Friday morning. Um, so if you guys want to add a flyer or two pages, I mean, I can give you whatever. The pages are half a piece of paper, so it's not really a full page. That's why I'm saying, you know, two pages. Um, and then obviously I have a space reserved in case you guys want the table. Um. You could have just. I mean, anything you guys want at the table, it's fine.
It sounds like we're coming into a space there at this point. So.
Can you help to jot us down? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Melissa.
Of course. It's important, I think.
What else do we wanna ask her? How's the wind looking for Saturday?
So far it looks pretty good. The weather looks really good.
Okay.
It's about eighty degrees and partially sunny. So maybe, maybe a little too hot, but hey, as long as, uh, you know, it's sunny, that's okay.
We'll take it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so open and available to us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so are you going to be able to pull those things together?
Yes.
Do we want to put something in this program? That's a little, I really appreciate the space. Isn't it usually like?
I would just focus on whatever you're gonna hand to people that day.
Maybe even if we just do a little more like coming. Get your questions answered by the way we developed it.
I don't. I don't know. I don't know if people are gonna look.
The other thing that is we could put our final proposed budget in there. But how much sense would it make to them?
So I'm feeling. Oh, sorry.
And maybe say something like we would appreciate your support. At the next referendum.
I don't know if it's off putting for people to. Feel like they're. Having to pay attention to the budget on a link today. I don't know if we should pre-warn them that we're gonna be there. I think we should just be there and have our information there and if they have questions. Yeah. That we definitely should have candy though, like I feel like.
As far as the booklet goes. Um I watched the board, I didn't listen to the worst thing, but I watched the board selection meeting and there. People at the board selection meeting were concerned about the board vegetation budget. Who were told we had this meeting today at six, who were warned. They're not here. So I don't think putting anything in the booklet is really gonna drive anybody to or from. Okay, so.
That's very generous.
I have another comment about. Outreach, community outreach um. I think we should. I don't wanna put work onto someone else because the PTA does a wonderful job, but when I was on PTA. And I was the president, we. There were a couple of us that became like supporters for the budget. So. They don't want to go to any great lengths, but if we could have even just. The PTA and I get I'm on their Facebook page and I didn't see anything come out before the referendum. But when the next referendum comes out, if there's some kind of. A communication that goes out to all the members of PTA. That the referendum is happening. It's just another way, another layer on top of the postcard. That's saying support, you know. Add your voice to the vote. Because. The sixty percent that came out. Doesn't include all those parents that are are we are making care of in our schools. So if we could get the PTA to do something that way.
So even conversely, I feel like maybe one of us, and I'm happy to volunteer to do that, goes to a PTA meeting and says, hey, this is what's going on. What can we do to count on support from you guys? Like, what do you mean? What information do you need? What can we do to help? Get the information out to your constituents.
Email blast, Facebook page, anything.
One of the officers happens to be married.
I'm not trying to say anything negative, but I'm just trying to figure out another layer.
I can tell you, I believe why they didn't and they're trying to stay as out of politics as possible. Um there's no harm in asking, but I I. I'm not sure. What they would do. I mean, I I get. I get the neutrality of the referendums today. Please go vote like that. I think that's neutral, but. It's definitely not up to base, but I I can tell you that's probably why I think it goes last time is because they're just trying to stay out of town politics. I know, I I understand. I understand both sides of it, I really do.
Yeah, I just was offering it up because it's something that we had we've done in the past and I don't, I think even something as simple as. There's a referendum vote coming up. You know, not today necessarily, but maybe. A couple of days ahead or and then that day or whatever, if you got that already, you just have to. Put it on Facebook or send that email blast out. Somehow because we can't do it through the schools. So the PTA is our way to get to. Those families of the kids that we are. Support here.
And it would just be a reminder.
That's all it has to do.
They are a large community voice. And we are so lucky to have each one of them. Um and that was one of the complaints I heard about the last referendum is there were just like they didn't know what's happening. So I think finding a way to get that information out. Through such an avenue is appropriate was to see if they're comfortable staying essentially without asking for support or.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying they need to support or not, I'm just saying just.
That's what we asked.
Get more information.
Okay, how are we gonna ask them to do that?
I will. I'll send the communication to Carrie.
We. We are invited to PTA meetings all the time as.
I don't know when the meeting is gonna be though in comparison to.
We've just met anytime all the time. We could all pop in this.
On the other um. Spot where we answered a lot of questions for the SBC was at the transfer station. We corrected a lot of. Misinformation. There. Uh if you want me to. Park myself there on a Wednesday or a Saturday or. Flip flop a workday for a, you know, Saturday or Sunday for a few hours if that's something depending on when the referendum is. Uh I think we're still allowed to answer questions. And have factual information. I don't think you can say which way to vote, but it's something that another spot where a lot of people come through. If they wanna come over and get information, you could use the same information you would use at Wellington Day.
Did you say that the board of finances is meeting on Tuesday? They will set a date for the town.
I believe so because there's a board of finance next.
I think their work is done at this point in time. They're now it's on the selectmen.
Oh, I see. It doesn't have to go back to the board of plans. It's just. They gave the numbers and that's gonna be.
I think so.
And does that set um? Things in motion as far as what we're able to do.
I'll find out uh find out what the time treatment. They have to let it sit for a number of days and then it's gonna it's gonna be in the newspaper. I don't know if they're having another um town meeting. Or if they're just going to go to referendum again. I'm not sure about that. There was definitely conversation about that. So.
So. They're not having a public hearing. They are going to use a town meeting as a public hearing in addition to the voting of referendum. So I think once that vote goes through, if it's. Party passes, I think that's when the blackout period starts.
I'm sorry, we're assuming too.
Okay. We're. Now we're traveling with our giant billboard.
Cool, okay.
Transportation is not a bad idea.
Okay, so Phil, you're gonna check in with the PTA people.
Yeah, and I'll I'll talk to our attorney too to make sure I hear from our attorney what the blackout period is and what we can and cannot do. So we're we are in compliance with that.
Okay, what else do you all wanna see at Wellington? Or otherwise?
Think just having the information and being there where people can ask questions without having. Those who are really interested are going to come over and ask their question while we're where we're available. And they don't have to come to a meeting or listen to a three hour meeting on Zoom. Um to get all the information that they're trying to get and try to. Purse it out while we're. All the stuff is going on at the same time that you're trying to process what someone just said.
Okay.
I I'll be around. I'm just not sure of the hours, but during that time I will be there for a part of.
What are the rules again about how many of us can be together?
Always had a problem?
You should keep you should keep it at three and not have more than three.
So we should do assignments.
I can tell you I will be in Pundam watching six and seven year olds try to hit the soft bones. Saturday, but if the transportation goes over the ground, I can do a transportation.
Okay, we're at Wellington Day anyway, so I'll just hopefully bring my binoculars and keep going. Maybe we'll be right next to each other, never know.
I'm gonna go.
Okay. I can give up a spot, you know, for a little.
Yeah, just be aware, that's all. Just be aware of this.
Well, I do feel like we're a bit under the microscope and people might be looking for any reason to point a finger and so we're not gonna let that. Period. Okay. I think. You know, this group. We are we are, I will say, still new. This is our first budget go around together, but I do think that we understand the importance of. Transparency and including everyone and doing our best um. For our students, staff and our buildings and that's. Something I think you can see when you watch our conversations or when you're with us at this show. Um and that's not any different. That's true. That's true. Truth here, it's truth in person, it's truth at Wellington Day and anywhere else, so um we have nothing to hide. Okay. Absolutely.
Is that? I don't. Think any one of us ever. Tried to mislead or misrepresent or anything like there's there's nothing to. Literally, there's nothing to hide in his budget and everything that I got questioned through got answered. Correctly and fashionably. And I. You know, that's not clear for some reason, but I mean, it is. There's there's nothing that's ever been said or done. To deceive or anything like that. I'm getting that sense and I am trying to figure out. Where. Where did that come from? Cause. I never saw any of that. So.
Well, you're taking a lot of heat.
I I'm taking a lot of.
Really good ideas.
I gotta I gotta catch from a state representative today. No, no, not from not from that. Just ask me like, hey, here's a little support for you.
You all had a very good handle on the budget. And that's something that's you should understand like as a board. When I put options in front of you, sometimes people just go. Check a box and that's not what you do. You have a very good understanding of what's in your budget and how you want to apply money for students. And that matters. And sometimes that transparency is. When you're in lockstep in your decision making for dollars for kids. Can be a little scary for folks. So.
No need to be scared. We have candy. Okay, um I don't think we need to make any sort of motions here and. Do you think of anything or? Wanna add an idea or you know, like. Streamers or something in your basement that you think would be super fun for our table? You can let me know or just bring them. I'll find duct tape somewhere at our house.
I have a bubble machine somewhere.
Carry out the machine.
Very good. Coming up with parodies.
All right, we're gonna move on to agenda item number four, which is presence to speak. If you would like to participate, just raise your virtual hand, please.
They can unmute too.
Well. Yes.
No, they can they can unmute. It's on its check.
Okay.
Just call on somebody, they should be able to mute.
Steph, you can unmute yourself if you're understanding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I just wanted to offer an idea. I think uh the the fact that the additional and unforeseen out placements were. Uh I think the major a major driver in your. Uh year over year percentage increase. If you can isolate that. Um and I would say. I I mean, we we learned about two in the very late stages after everything was underway and almost finished. But I think altogether, Phil, if I'm. If I I might be wrong. Um year over year, it's something like a four student increase in out placements. Is that right? I I shouldn't ask the question. Let me just give you my idea. My idea would be. What your percentage is now after you did these cuts is uh uh where are you at now? Year over year, where does this? New. A hundred and eight thousand put you. And so if you take that percentage and compare it to. The growth that state mandated for the outplacement students that's over and above what you spent, what you're spending this fiscal year. And and then see what that. What that net. Increase is in your year over year spending. I think you could do that with a chart. I'm saying I'm using a lot of words. It's not that complicated. As I'm making it sound, that would give. People an a real strong idea of where you where your hands were tied essentially. That it's not, you can't look at the gross year over year spending. Uh without thinking, wow, why are they asking for so much more? And this is a real quick snapshot way of showing. That distinctive difference. That's that's my idea for you.
Thank you. Dan, let me see your hand.
Yours a little bit.
There you go.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. You hear me okay? Yeah, okay, sorry. I started in my car, so it was still in road mode, so I'm sorry about that. So um I just had a thought for the community outreach and I don't know how to approach it, but um a lot of people. Are, you know, hesitant to speak about things in front of people or to approach people, so I don't know if there's some kind of. Like comments box or some way to kind of collect some data ahead of time. To maybe address some of the issues because some people don't like being on the spot.
Thank you for that suggestion. Okay, Melissa.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I spoke to Carrie and PTA would be willing to do. Uh the emails and um you know, as Vice President, I fully support that. Uh because it's not a Democratic Republican thing. It's supporting the Board of Ed. As well as our students who we directly support, so. We would be able to do that.
Doesn't that feel good to hear that kind of? Yeah, really does. Okay, Steph, your your hand is still up. Did you think of something else?
Is it okay? I'm sorry, I meant to mention this. So so I've heard I've heard a couple of dates uh floating and I, you know, I think. And and also the uh the issue of when is when does the cone of silence descend on when you can express opinion versus facts? I believe. Um I believe that there, you know, that the the date that's a, you know, a potential preliminary date that's being discussed. For a town meeting would be June eighth. I'm sorry, June tenth. And a date for the second referendum would be June eighteenth. So. My understanding from the legal feedback I've gotten is. You, the moment where you can no longer discuss and debate is at the conclusion of the town meeting. Before it goes to referendum. And you know, obviously I'm not an attorney. I just play one on uh Zoom. So if you if you uh. You know, but that's just preliminary information I've gotten from. Uh good sources who are trying to plan all this, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you, public, for sharing your ideas and all.
We are, I'm so sorry, yes ma'am, come on in. Um, just to kind of like figure back off of what Steph said for an idea of like an easy visual. And I think something that really stuck out that. I don't know if it was. Um. It's, well, I don't know if it was uh, interpreted in such an easy way, but like I think what she's saying or something that might be good to know is like, okay. Our, what was it, like five percent of our increase was just based on special education, whereas like the rest of it, especially now after these. Cuts was really what like one point eight or something it's gonna be now because it was seven, you know what I mean? So just be like, and then year over year, it's been a one point nine percent this and that, blah, 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 blah. But this year with the driving force was five percent of our budget increases due to unfunded state mandates for special education. Really, our total operating budget increase was. One point five or whatever, you know, and you just be like, oh, wow, like I didn't realize. I see that you guys have a. Whatever it is now, six or seven and seven point three, yeah, whatever it is, the six point eight percent.
And then we can compare that to the general government percentage um, increase in their budget.
Yeah, if we want to or just stick with our own or whatever, because I know a lot of them. Yeah, but I think to just like she said, to specifically say that like this. Driver of our budget increases really kind of out of our hands. Inflation's four percent, which some, certain people keep saying, oh, we want it under four, that they will have that special number. Well, we are technically, because our increase to our regular budget list is only gonna be less than two.
Yeah.
With.
Or half.
With pie charts and.
Of what they're saying.
I'll do, I, I'm thinking of, I'm, I'm thinking about doing a bar graph, because you can keep them small and then show the big jump and then reduce the big jump when you take out the special piece. Cause it'll bring it back in line there, everything.
And then also include the previous years with those lower percentages, yeah. And how many.
I'll put together a bunch of stuff and then you, you can put up all those posters, whatever you want.
Cause there's a fine line between like.
Yeah.
And grabbing some tie.
Yeah.
I think it's two point five, the general um. So that is a very good one. That's certainly higher than.
Very.
Okay, did anybody wanna um, get us out here?
Good turn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Favorite.
Thank you all very much. Oh, thank you.